All right, good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, September 12th meeting. Calling this meeting to order, and I'll start with our roll call with our city clerk.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Indupure.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart, can you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, will you do the land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salage peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next up, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, great. So we are going to start with public comment in the House. Mary Victor.
Good evening, Mary Victor. I have lived in Samamish, I think, 23 years now. So before the meeting, I did pass out some maps. These are the city's maps. They're not Mary's maps. They came off the website. And most of them have a 2003 date, but most of them, they won't have changed for a long time. So instead of -- so I'll try to go through what I can in three minutes. It's a little bit hard. So whenever we talk about environmentally critical areas, they are streams, wetlands, erosion hazard, landslide, seismic areas, which are called geologic hazards. And then there's also critical aquifer recharge areas that have to do with public and private wells and protecting those on water quality. So whenever you hear from David Pyle and the group and the consultant, they will show a picture of just the streams and the wetlands and the lakes, which is a nice, pretty, blue, green color, but they don't show the geologic hazards. Now, I understand that the code for geologic hazards, which would include erosion, landslide, and steep slopes, it needs to be adopted at the same time you adopt the comp plan in 2024 by December. So you have to have all those written, so it is on the slate. The reason that I'm talking tonight is I'd like you to see where they are. Since you usually only see the blue and green map, I would like you, as council members, the next time staff presents, if they haven't started using the geo-hazard maps as well, those need to be shown. And the reason is, you'll see all the red and orange over here, which is kind of, I call it, off the shoulder of Samamish. The dark red is landslide hazard, and the light red is erosion hazard, and then there's also steep slopes. So the second handout is from the current comp plan, and it says, "Steep slopes and wetlands should limit development potential, and natural features do influence land use." And you're talking a lot about land use. And then there is a map in the comp plan. It took me till January of 2020 to actually get a legend put on it. The legend just shows that the steep slopes are gray. So the steep slopes lie in the same areas that you'll see the landslide and erosion. So you can kind of think of all of those as geologic hazards or geo-hazards. And the soils for those have been set up for, I don't know, 6, 8, 10,000 years or longer. The soils don't change. Those are from the geology and the glacial stuff before. So what I'd like to do is just take this one part, so you can see some shapes. You'll see like a C here. And if you look over on that map when you're leaving or coming, you'll notice that that C is there. It's right by Mead School. It's north of Inglewood Hill Road. And it's kind of where they've clustered the houses together, and they protected that C area because of erosion hazard in the past. So it's my example of how, if you do have good code and you use it, you'll be able to see it on the map. And you'll see that trees are preserved, the areas are built better. You'll see places where wildlife and birds and stuff can live, instead of it just being flat development. And then the one thing I would like to point out is, I live in Tamarack, and the only place where there's dark red and there isn't orange is Tamarack. So Tamarack's only had help for the landslide hazard code, which is more risky than erosion, but we're not even getting that code. So that's some of the things I'd like to see changed. So please remember that the next time David Pyle and consultant present. I'd like him to use these existing maps so people can visually see where things are.
Thank you. Ann?
Good evening. My name is Ann Cruz. I live on, pardon me, I live on Long Lake, which is part of the Beaver Lake system. And I've lived there for 25 years. I'm speaking in support of the agenda item on the Beaver Lake Management District. We're fortunate here in Samamish to have a natural environment that includes our forests, our parks, and our lakes, and to have the staff and the resources to maintain those public places. I try to do what I can, first through how I maintain my own property, where I'm trying to convert lawn to native plants, second by serving as a Samamish steward and leading a restoration effort project in Beaver Lake Park, and then finally, for the last two years, I've served on the Beaver Lake Management District Advisory Board. Those of us who live in the watershed and on the lakes themselves see on a daily basis what's going on on the lake system, both good and bad. Those of us on the advisory board want to help assure the continuing health of the lakes, which are so important, both as a key part of our ecosystem and also as a key recreational resource for the entire community. So we appreciate your support for our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Good evening, council members. I'm Mike Brusco, resident of Samamish for 25 years. And tonight, I'm representing the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, where I serve as the chairman of the board. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First off, despite the name Issaquah, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank really serves 16 zip codes, about 6,000 people, and over time, hundreds of people in Samamish. And I want to thank the council for recognizing that fact, because in the past, the council has provided, with the help of the Human Services Department, grants to the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. And I also want to recognize Rita Bod for, she's acted really as an advisor and supported the work that we do. We treat her as a key stakeholder and meet once or twice a year at least. So she's been extremely helpful in helping us understand the needs of the residents of Samamish. The second reason I'm here is to inform you and anybody listening out there that, you know, despite the fact that the economy may seem pretty good, lots of people have jobs, unemployment is low, the folks are really struggling. There are the haves and have-nots, you've heard that. And I've got a couple of statistics here. Compared to last year, at the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, there's been an increase of 30 to 35% more people seeking services. That's huge. Food purchase costs have increased 20%. Some of that's due to inflation, the rest of it's due to the increase in demand. And you hope that we could get more donations, but in fact, there's been a 15% reduction in the donations provided through the government programs and through food that's distributed from grocery stores, Grocery Rescue it's called. And also amazingly, a 25% or 24% reduction in donations through just neighborhood kind of food drives. So that doesn't paint a very good picture. And I want to highlight the mission of the food bank. It's to unite our community in nourishing and nurturing individuals by removing barriers to healthy food, vital resources, and connections to essential services. That mission was chosen very deliberately to say, we're really more than food. In fact, those essential services include things like transportation, being able to navigate legal issues, and the navigation of government programs and case management, which is not very visible, but extremely important. And we like to look at those parts of our programs as a hand up rather than a handout to break the cycle of need. Which brings me to the final point, which is individual donations make up 80% of the cash budget of the organization. And so support from individuals is critical. We have our fundraiser this month on the 26th, and I would hope that people look at our website and come and attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to move online.
If you wish to provide public comment online, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. I will promote attendees in the order they raise their hand.
My name is John Verdickin, and I'm here in support of the presentation that you're going to be receiving in a few minutes from the city council and the city employees that support the advisory board. I am, I am one of the five Beaver Lake Management District advisors that sit on the board. I live in the watershed district, specifically on Beaver Lake, and I've lived here since 2010. I got involved with the advisory board because of, we wanted to maintain the quality and the pristine nature of the lake. As you may or may not know, this lake has been around for thousands of years, since its formation after the last ice age. And as of late, with the development of the city and the population growth around the lake, we wanted to make sure that we did everything we could to try to maintain the pristine nature of the lake, and that's kind of what we do on the board. We work with water quality specialists, with the city, the state, and the county, and we work with them to help maintain and eradicate some of the invasive species that are on the lake, and to work as best we can to make sure that we maintain the pristine nature of this lake going future, so that the fortunate people that live on this lake have an opportunity to experience it as it was hundreds of years ago. And thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to hearing from the city employees later on the presentation on the state of the board.
Thank you.
I will now promote the second commenter.
Let's see here. Hello, city council members. Paul Stickney here. I'd like to compliment all the callers this evening. I felt good, really good, the public comments, all on important topics. Today, I sent a copy of my last week's comment, which was sort of jokingly, but seriously, about how to turn talking about housing supplies from a swear word into joy by reversing how we look at the concept of fear and the formula to find optimal outcomes that enrich and sustain and stay our city. Anyway, today, I would just like to mention, there's a couple posts on Samamish Central, and as you all know, that is a public site, where somebody was talking about the GMA and asked a question about the growth target. And I answered back, something I'd like to share, is that there's a lot of squishiness in the target, and there's really no teeth in past and current targets. And one thing that I think is more right to approach a target is to divide the target by the number of years it's in place. So our 4,900 growth target has been in place since late 2015, early 2016, and that's roughly 245 homes a year. And our city has built from 2016 to 2022 approximately 1,700 houses. And that target is a minimum, but that's right on target with the 245 a year minimum. Our current target is a minimum. Our future target is inconsistency. A person posted after that and said, "Well, this is great that we've met our target and we can stall growth if we want." And I made a comment, I think I'd like to share here, that I believe our community should stall the pace of adding more large, single-family homes, because we have oversupplies relative to our economic and demographic makeup. But consider adding more different and diverse and smaller houses, specifically for price ranges from about $500,000 to $1 million, too, which are all market rate houses that we are extremely short on. I know we have to meet affordable housing targets also. And I propose adding condos and townhomes and town centers as condo legislation is changing, and it, and they can be added in ways that create fewer car trips per unit, stormwater, and students per unit, more net revenue, and lower costs for people who would like to stay. So I'm advocating for adding the price ranges we need in genuine, low-impact, net-positive ways. That's my comment today, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we, sorry, asking for clarification?
We don't normally allow a second comment, but on a different topic, I'd say it's within your discretion, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, council, is that all right? I guess I do, yeah.
Thank you, Mary Victor, again from Samamish. And Tom Hornish was the one that pointed out, if you wait till everybody, it can be allowed. I just wanted to speak very briefly on the Beaver Lake Management District. I've only attended a few of their meetings. Some of the information from their meetings does end up at the Kokoni Work Group sometimes, because some of the people are shared. But I wanted to let you know, from what I do know in code, Beaver Lake is right here, kind of looks like a beaver. And then here's Pine Lake, which looks like a stork with its head down. And then there are two creeks that run off of Pine Lake Creek, and I just wanted to tie that information together. Beaver Lake has some particular protections in the code, and Pine Lake does, too. Like, they're supposed to do 80% phosphorus removal instead of just 50, which is the standard, which has really helped for those lakes. And then I believe in the code, I haven't read it recently, but I believe if Pine Lake doesn't have something special for it, it can use what Beaver Lake does. So whatever you're hearing on Beaver Lake, I think that can or could apply to Pine Lake Creek. And then also, there's a Pine Lake Creek Basin study going on right now. So I just wanted to let you know, even though the lakes seem to be separate and they're different things, I think they are related in code and certainly in the function and the things that you do. So I just wanted to point that out as you're listening, so think broader than just one lake, because I think the things they're doing are amazing, and I'm looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you.
If there are any other online commenters, please raise your hand. I see no other commenters, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our executive session, pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. Council may take action afterwards. And I do see 15 minutes, is that still correct?
Actually, Mayor, I think to be realistic, we should say 30 minutes.
Okay.
So we would be done coming back at 7:18.
Perfect. All right, let's do it, 7:18. Thank you. Council is extending executive session to 7:30. Council is extending executive session by 10 minutes. We'll be back at 7:40. All right, welcome back, everybody. So next up, we do have proclamations. We do have the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and Councilmember Trine will be reading that one.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas each year in the United States, more than 15,780 children from birth to 19 years old are diagnosed with cancer, equal to about 42 childhood cancer diagnoses each day. And whereas approximately 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer before their 20th birthday, with this number increasing each year. And whereas each year worldwide, there are more than 300,000 new childhood cancer diagnoses, equal to about every three minutes a family will hear the words, "Your child has cancer." And whereas although the five-year survival rate for childhood cancers has reached 85%, nearly 1,500 American children under the age of 19 still die each year from cancer, making it the leading cause of death in children ages 1 to 14. Whereas about 9,910 children in the United States under the age of 15 will be diagnosed with cancer in 2023, and which about 1,040 of those children under the age of 15 are expected to die from cancer in 2023. And whereas causes of childhood cancer are largely unknown, but due to major treatment advancement in recent decades, 85% of children with cancer now survive five years or more, an increase from the mid-1970s, when the five-year rate was about 58%. And whereas cancer treatments for children often differ, and survival rates may vary a great deal depending on the type of cancer, along with other factors. And whereas hundreds of children are being treated for cancer in Washington State, with locations at Seattle's Children's Hospital, Mary Bridge Hospital in Tacoma, and Shiner's Hospital for Children in Spokane. And whereas Washington is a caring state and has communities that support children and families, we are now, therefore, the mayor, Kayla Clark, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Howe, National Recovery Month?
National Recovery Month. Whereas Recovery Month is a national observance aimed to increase public awareness surrounding mental health and addiction recovery. And whereas the right to treatment, support, and resources, recovery is possible for everyone. And whereas families and caregivers face unique challenges when helping loved ones who are in recovery and working to overcome mental health or substance use, abuses, they shouldn't have it like this, substance use disorder challenges, whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas an estimated 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas we recognize four dimensions of recovery from mental health, as substance use disorders, health, home, purpose, and community. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of the National Drug Control Policy, King County and Washington State invite all residents and the city of Samamish to participate in National Recovery Month. Mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Recovery Month. And point of order, just point of privilege, rather, really quickly, as a CASA court-appointed advocate for folks in the court system, I work with a ton of families with substance use disorders, and I can't tell you how exciting it is when they are able to overcome these challenges, get healthy, get their kids back. It's, it's a huge journey, and it's really tough. So this continued support for people, I know we don't always have the patience for it, but we need to find it somehow. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. All right, now we have our new business. We have a presentation for 2024 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan with Anjali. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Your first topic is the...
Pardon, I think we're having some audio problems. Should we take a short recess?
Yes, you said all audio. Just like a five-minute break, then?
I probably won't need 10.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Your first topic tonight is the 2024 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update. Our consultant has spent the last several months completing an assessment of our parks, as well as an extensive public outreach effort through various avenues, such as virtual and in-person open houses, surveys, and by hosting booths at many of our city events. As you will hear tonight, we are fortunate to have a community that values its parks and recreation, and this comes with the responsibility to continue to maintain and expand our parks system to meet the needs of our growing community. As a reminder to all, this is an update to the 2018 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, and so we use that as a starting point. For example, the goals, draft goals that you will see tonight are based off the 2018 plan as a starting point. In fact, the survey questions intentionally repeat some of the questions asked six years ago, to be able to compare what priorities might have changed and what remain the same. And lastly, the PROS Plan is a component of the comprehensive plan, and staff are communicating internally to ensure that both documents are coordinated. On the staff side, we have Janie Walzer, our management analyst, who is doing a great job managing this effort, along with Shelby Peralt, Parks Project Manager, and Kevin Teague, our Deputy Director. With that, I'll hand it over to Steve Do, the city's consultant from Conservation Techniques, to give the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I will share my screen to get a presentation up, so please bear with me for a moment. Can I just see someone nod? Shelby, can you nod? Can you see the screen? Okay, great. So again, thank you for the opportunity to connect with you about the PROS Plan. As Anjali mentioned, we have a brief presentation to walk you through current status on where we are with the project to date, and also anxious to get your feedback and thoughts on how to communicate better with council about the PROS Plan and the plan document going forward. As Anjali noted, the discussion tonight will cover several topics, including just a real quick overview of where we are in the project, touch on site assessments, survey summary, as well as preliminary goals for the plan, and then we'll wrap with the next steps and discussion from council. So the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, or PROS Plan for short, is the city's strategic plan and guiding document for the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. It was last updated in 2018, and it's updated on a six-year cycle, in part to stay eligible for state and federal grants through the Recreation and Conservation Office, the RCO. The PROS Plan also includes a capital project list to inform project priorities and for assisting in budget discussions with council going forward. The PROS Plan is both useful and actionable, and helps the department in several ways. Many things have been accomplished since the 2018 plan, and you can see on screen many that are listed, and those include the athletic field study, acquiring about 65 acres of parkland, opening Big Rock Central, expanding availability of Beaver Lake Lodge for senior programming, among others. The project started early in the year, and we're a little more than halfway into the process, and community engagement was or is a major effort for the project, and we've reached out to the community in a number of different ways, including through a community survey, tabling at community events, multiple group-based stakeholder discussions, and to... two public meetings, one virtual and one in-person last week. As an early task to do the project, we conducted an assessment of existing parks and open spaces, and I'll briefly touch on that process for you now. These were visual site assessments, visual observations assessments that were conducted in the spring by licensed landscape architects who are on our project team, and they were looking at the quality and condition of parks and the amenities in the parks, as well as opportunities for enhancements or improvements to the city's facilities. And it was through the lens of accessibility, playability, durability, and ascents plays. Regarding accessibility, we're thinking about who can use the parks and open spaces and how they use them. As with many older parks, there were some architectural or design barriers existing in Sammamish's parks today, and that's also common in other jurisdictions that have older parks that were built or developed, you know, before the nineteen nineties. And to the benefit of this project, the city's completed an ADA transition plan back in two thousand one, and that identified a number of ADA needs as well as corrective actions that the city can take over time to improve the overall park system. These include things like addressing accessible routes and entries to parks and amenities, as well as improving signage and parking area striping and things like that. And just for reference, the image on the top corner with the playground is one that shows a ramp into a playground area, which is great, that provides access. However, there is a lip between the concrete and the asphalt that acts as a barrier for someone who has a mobility challenge to get into that space. So the infrastructure's in place, but small modifications may be required over time to improve these amenities and make them more accessible for everyone. For playability or the utility of the parks and open space, the city does have play equipment that is aging in its older parks, and also the city's got a good program of replacing those equipment over time. And going forward, to look at options to create more universal play or fully accessible play opportunities to in part address the accessibility piece, but to also create more variety in the park system. Sport courts and sport fields are generally in good condition, and the city should continue its program of transitioning to synthetic turf to accommodate more intensive use as funds allow and through partnerships. But we were also doing site assessments after a rain event, so we did see some pooling and puddling, and modest improvements to drainage could also help with those sorts of field needs in the interim. And there have been many efforts to standardize park elements, such as benches, picnic tables, trash cans, bike racks, and improvements can still be made in the system throughout the park system, and that would help the maintenance staff when repairs are needed or to streamline the replacement of elements as is required. Some maintenance challenges do exist within the system. For example, again, the top image shows a shelter that is functional and looks lovely, but it is a challenge to take care of because the city can't get large equipment in to clean the roof or to maintain the roof if needed. Additionally, regular inspections of different park components are an ongoing issue that will help with long-term longevity and may require specialized professionals, especially when looking at in-water or shoreline facilities such as docks. Sammamish has a wonderful variety of park spaces, and think about the differences between Lower Commons, Beaver Lake Park, or Big Rock Park. Lovely spaces, each is unique, and clear and consistent wavefinding signage helps direct people to those unique spaces. And the city will need to continue its upgrading of park signs for consistency and not incandity. Those parks are enhanced or developed, continue to create unique and diverse experiences, understanding each site has its unique character, and designing the infrastructure, like picnic shelters or play areas, to help reinforce the uniqueness of each site. So in all, the park system's in fairly good condition, really good condition actually. And using those site assessments, we prepare the quick visual snapshot of the park system by park and by park amenity. And this is really just a reference that gives you a quick look at the overall system, and what you have on screen is just a short snippet of all of the parks, just to make it a little readable. And a quick takeaway is, if you see green, green is good, yellow represents fair, and orange-red represents things that need attention. So just again, quick snapshot, you can see across these several parks that the parks are in quite good condition. Now to transition to some of the highlights of what we heard from the community through the community survey. The community survey, if you remember, was conducted in the spring. It was administered over an eight-week period between late March and late May, and it was conducted in four languages, Chinese, English, Hindi, and Spanish. And it was dual mode, so it was a mail-out survey to a random sample at twenty-five-hundred households, and it was also an online survey that was available to the broader community. Those two data sets were kept separate, so we can compare and contrast the data and see if there's any variability between those who took the random sample and those who took the general public one. In the mail random sample version, four hundred and fifty responses represent an eighteen percent response rate, which is quite good, and in all, seven hundred and sixty-one responses to this survey. This graph shows the variance between the city's population in blue and the respondents to the survey in orange, and this is aggregated data between the online and the mail, just to illustrate that the survey does skew a little bit to older residents for the survey. But I also need to note that for mail surveys, our experience has been that they tend to skew to older residents, and the online version tends to skew to younger version or younger residents respondents with children in the household. And regarding children in the household, we feel like we've got a good representation of the community in the survey data, in that, again, the online survey data tends to skew a little too younger households, also with children in the household, and that came through in this data set here. And in this case, blue represents mail survey, orange represents the online. So you can see slightly higher responses in the online survey with households that have children. According to census data, Sammamish has about forty-nine percent of households with at least one child under eighteen in the household, and in aggregate between the mail and the online survey, our response was forty-seven percent. So again, quite comparable. Now looking at some of the data. So to start, nearly everyone who took the survey, ninety-seven percent, feel that parks and recreation is either essential or important to the quality of life in Sammamish. Can't really get much higher than that, so I think you should take a good feeling toward how your residents feel about park and recreation issues. Regarding visitation, we asked a question, how often do you go to park, open space, or facility? Overall, eighty-five percent of respondents visit at least monthly, which is also a quite high number. This is an increase over the two thousand eight PROS Plan, which was at about eighty-three percent. And we had a secondary question in this survey this time that asked about whether your usage changed because of COVID, and fifty-one percent of respondents said that their usage of parks or visitation increased over or due to COVID. And again, that is coming through not only in this data, but in staff's understanding of how people are using parks and open space today. Some of the main reasons why people are going out to the parks and open spaces, a big reason here is trails, to walk, run, jog, and use trails. Eighty-six percent are out there for trails, which again is a relative response that's consistent with other communities nearby, as well as state and national information that shows that being on trails, being out running or walking or biking consistently is a high use and a high facility type. That's followed by people going out just to relax, but also for fitness, events, dog walking, playgrounds, those are the top sections. A number of write-in comments were about access to water, just to be out to enjoy nature, to have social engagement. Also, visitation, when looking at the two thousand eighteen data set, shows an increase from two thousand eighteen to this current survey for a number of different experiences. Trails, fitness, events, and athletic fields all increased in the current survey over where they were in two thousand eighteen. The website question is, why don't you go more often? And we offered an out for respondents on this to say, this is not applicable because we go often, and nearly half of the respondents said that was their case, that they go often and this question doesn't apply to them, but for the remaining fifty-three percent. You can see on the graphic how that breaks down between the types of reasons why they're not coming more frequently. One has to do with the infrastructure, not enough parking, or just that sense of there's too many people, or just the communications issue of not knowing what's offered. Some of the write-in comments had to do with weather, whether it's too hot or too rainy, lack of amenities, not knowing connections for trails, those sorts of write-ins. This survey also had a question about priority amenities, and there was a list of twenty-seven different types of amenities that people could say each amenity was either a top priority or high priority, low priority, not a priority. This graphic represents the top four of that list of twenty-seven, and again, shows there's strong interest in trails. Walking hiking trails came in at the top priority, and followed by restrooms, providing lifeguards at Pine Lake Beach, and providing more community events during the year. So to see the internal consistency between some of these questions is a definite plus, where you have, for example, with trails, high usage for trails and then high demand for trails, it comes through in a couple of different questions also. And of that list of twenty-seven, I'm also showing the lower priority types of amenities, which include indoor soccer field, disco, sand volleyball, and cricket fields. And that's not to say that these are not important to the community, it's just that oftentimes when you have a long list, and some things are either single-purpose or specialized facilities, like sand volleyball, or cricket, or some other sports like skateboarding or things like that, that offers an amenity to a smaller percentage of the general public. So it makes sense that the overall in aggregate response is that those are of lower priority. One standout, though, is the pickleball, and the need for pickleball courts came in at position eleven on that list of twenty-seven. So it was definitely higher than several other standalone amenities. When asking about overall priorities for the park and open space system, we asked a fourth-ranked question where we said, of these six items, rank them one through six. And on screen, you see the difference between the mail respondents and the online respondents. And one thing to note is the top four are the same, they just show up in slightly different order between the mail and the online respondents. The top two, about maintaining existing facilities and developing trails, again, show that internal consistency about trail dealer and the need for just taking care of what you have before doing more. We had another question about residents' priorities toward land acquisitions, and overall, respondents rated acquiring land for preserving habitat and passive recreation uses as top priorities, and it's somewhat consistent with where we were in two thousand eighteen, where trails and preserving natural areas for open space were the top two for So distilling what we saw in the survey and what we've heard from stakeholders and through public meetings, I just want to offer some high-level core themes about what we're seeing in the data, just to start to synthesize the information a little bit for you. One column has to do with taking care of you, so renovating and upgrading your existing parks, taking care of the ADA compliance issues and removing barriers, and preserving and maintaining the natural areas and natural beauty of Sammamish's park system. Another column deals with continuing to build the system, and this is about developing existing park sites, in part building on the momentum started through the Site Master Plan processes from, say, Beaton Hill or Big Rock South and some other projects. So there's a lot of community engagement around that, so people want to see, well, let's get some stuff built into the ground. As part of that, building the system, trying to find ways to expand the trail system, as well as looking at opportunities to expand water access, but then also providing more user conveniences, such as restrooms, parking, and signage. And then the third piece is about expanding the variety of recreation opportunities, providing more choices for people to be out, and could include additional pickleball, community gardens off-leash, but also all-inclusive play areas, or opportunities for public art, or more events and cultural activities. So all this kind of lends itself to thinking about kind of the direction of the PROS Plan. So in the two thousand eighteen PROS Plan, there was a strong emphasis toward acquiring additional parklands, increasing the capacity for sport fields, improving communications and wavefinding. In the current plan effort, it's still, as I showed in the last slide, boils down to maintaining what you have, upgrading and developing the existing parks, and expanding that variety of what's available for users of your system. So we're, as a team, currently working through the development of the PROS Plan right now and the document, and we're also at the same time preparing an update to the capital project list that will be the list that will help set priorities and define some discussions with council about funding and help your budgets. But I also want to share some high-level overview of the direction for the goals, the draft goals, for the PROS Plan. And these goals build on the two thousand eighteen plan and refresh those, but there are some additions, and I'll touch on those. So goal one really is about encouraging and supporting participation by the community in all things park and recreation. That could be through park master planning, as again, Beaton Hill, Big Rock South, et cetera, but also through expanding and promoting volunteer opportunities and improving awareness about what's available through communication, social media, website, signage, et cetera. Goal two, as we've got drafted so far, is new to the two thousand twenty- Goal two, as we've got drafted so far, is new to the twenty-twenty-four pros plan. It's about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging and builds on the two thousand twenty-two resolution adopted by council. And it really focuses uh, language toward access, communications, outreach, and kind of art and culture. Um, so providing a space in the park system where people of all types, all all ages and abilities feel like they're part of the system and they can see themselves in the system through how they access, how they can be included in the activities and and how that identity comes through. The next several are kind of more bread and butter, park planning goals. Uh, so first one under park and open space has to do with providing a diversified and connected network of parks that offers a variety of passive and active opportunities. Um, so continuing to fill gaps in your park system and focusing on land acquisition strategy additionally, as well as trail connectivity. Um, working with partners and looking for opportunities to work with landowners to have a larger base of property to work with and working with the development community to make sure that uh, new proposals that come in fit into the intent of the plan and uh, could potentially provide for additional recreation opportunities for residents. The second goal under parks and open space has to do with the designing and developing high-quality facilities. And Samamish has definitely been doing that over several years and it's a continuation. So continuing to develop for safety, for enjoyment and for um, quality recreation experiences uh, for the public. And again, part of that is about uh, providing a range of play activities, play types. Um, and also improving the system through ADA enhancements and uh, building on what we hear from the public. Maintenance and sustainability, uh, really it's taking care of what you have and and caring for the assets that the city owns. Uh, making sure that things are safe and attractive, incorporating uh, sustainable or green building practices as funding allows and as design accommodates. And even incorporating environmental learning into the the park system and finding partners to help use that as a means to get uh, people out and engaged in the environment. Trails and connectivity, again, we've heard a lot through this process about interest in trails. So this uh, goal is a reinforcement of the twenty-eighteen plan and really relies heavily on uh, coordination and partnership with community development and city engineering staff for the transportation master plan, making sure that the plans align and also looking for opportunities for easements, access routes to accommodate where trails could be located, but also for providing uh, those trail accommodations, restrooms, trailheads, signage, and accommodable user types. Climate resiliency is new to the twenty-twenty-four plan. And the intent here is to support the city's overall effort in climate action planning. And this set of goals and or this goal and some objectives deals mostly with park system-focused uh, sort of pieces that in part rely on sustainable practices and policies, partly around environmental, I'm sorry, urban forest management, uh, tree canopy and tree resilience, making sure that there are succession plans in place for uh, parks as trees age out. Utilizing native or low-resourced vegetation to soften the maintenance demands uh, and maintenance costs down the road. And looking to coordinate with uh, owners potentially who are adjacent to some of the city preserves to accommodate um, additional canopy coverage and uh, sensitive use of their land. Within recreation facilities and activities, this is a consolidation of two goals from the previous plan into one. Recognizing that the city's primary role in recreation is as a provider of facility and as a supporter of other entities offering programs. Since the city doesn't act as a primary provider of recreation programs, much of this uh, goal deals with partnering, partnering for providers, partnering with the school district, partnering for special events and other program activities. We only have two more. Uh, this one under funding and operations deals with finance, strategies and partnerships. Um, so here looking to explore what funding sources might be options to enhance and improve the park and open space system. Um, staying on top of the city's fee policy for facilities and rentals and periodically reviewing and potentially updating park impact fees and the city's uh, capital improvement plan to make sure that the project lists stay fresh. And lastly, leadership, leadership and management and making sure that there are ways to maximize operational efficiencies, maybe through staffing or contracting or the site management of the parks and park system. Uh, but also about providing opportunities for professional staff development and staying on top of the interests and uses of the uh, parks by the public and knowing what their levels of satisfaction are over time. So you can be nimble and and pay attention to that. So that's a quick snapshot of a lot of information about the survey, where we are in the process and goals. And as far as the next steps, I'd like to turn it back to Anjali just to wrap up and lead the Q and A session.
Thank you, Steve. So um, after tonight, we um, will work with the consultant to start um, putting together your draft chapters, take it back to our parks commission, the planning commission, and then bring it to council in December. Um, sorry, in November with a draft plan and then for adoption if all goes well by the end of the year. And with that, actually, I'll turn it back to you mayor for questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Napure?
Thank you, mayor, and thanks for the great presentation, Steve and Anjali. I have a few questions. Um, I'll start off with the goals. Um, I think they are very specific goals. Uh, how are we planning to measure the success of all of these goals? Do we have metrics that we have in plan? And I have a bunch of questions, so I'll ask one at a time.
Yeah, so that is a great question. Some of the uh, goals which are, like Steve pointed out, the bread and butter really translates into the capital improvement plan. So the PAX CIP um, actually will have projects that we can use and progressing on those projects, uh, how we would measure those goals. Some of the other goals are more um, that we have to consciously go in and make sure. This is a guiding um, book. We all do refer to it uh, frequently. But the most measurable one is capital projects right now.
Um, so I know I see you have the pros plan for twenty-eighteen. Um, I'm just wondering, like, when we did the revision in twenty-eighteen, I'm sure there were a lot of things that you wanted to do, which maybe didn't make it to the plan. So do you typically have that list or like a backlog of things where like, oh, we couldn't get this into the twenty-eighteen plan? But when you revise it again, maybe you would like to get these things in. Um, do you have a list like that? Um, are there some things that, you know, were aspirational or were just necessary then which didn't make the cut, but which you would like to have it in the this this iteration of the plan in twenty-twenty-four?
I don't know if we ended up with things right away that we felt didn't make the plan or didn't. But definitely it's not just what we hear now that makes it into a plan. It's what we hear over the course of six years. For instance, um, we've had the need for some kind of a greenhouse. And we've heard that constantly, you know, the desire that may maybe we will have something bigger than what the uh, Samamish Botanic Garden Society has been able to do at the Heritage Gardens. So we do start uh, you know, making notes and um, collecting that kind of information and then combine it with what we are hearing right now from the community and put it together into a proposed plan.
Great. Um, and I was really excited to see the goal on climate resiliency because I think uh, that is so important as part of our, you know, um, pros plan. Um, I was curious about, there was one slide which presented as to what folks wanted to see was wildlife viewing. And I was just, uh, you know, curious as to what kind of wildlife were people expecting to view and was it along the lines of, you know, birds or is it more animals? Like, did you get anything specific out there?
Um, yeah, so that came from the write-ins on the the survey responses and and there are various ones, but the large one is wildlife photography. So people like bird watching and and taking pictures of that. So um, they didn't get into more specifics than that, but the largest one was wildlife photography and then just viewing nature, you know, from your backyard and in like the reserves is a little different.
Hmm, okay. Um, i- in in the memo, there's also a reference to our, you know, that you want the pros plan to reflect a changing community. Now, in my mind, our community is always changing, right? And the needs might be different. Um, so were there a specific change that you wanted to focus on in in this, um, you know, in the upcoming pros plan? Is that something that you got from the surveys like, oh, you know, maybe we need to focus on the needs of a different demographic, for example? Uh, because I'm curious, you know, I think the community changes all the time. Is that the needs are a little different? Did you get something like that from the survey?
Uh, Steve, I don't know if you have something specific from the survey. I was going to speak to more um, the data collection on the demographics and just what staff have observed at our city events. Is there anything specific from the survey that you've heard? That you want to share before I respond?
So from the survey, it it wasn't quite as specific uh, regarding the changing character of the community. But the one theme that or two themes that came through for me is the interest in all-inclusive, all-accessible uh, activities that can accommodate all user types. And then separately about the communications aspect of um, making sure people know what's available and that cuts across all different demographic types.
And um, I recall from one of our stakeholder meetings, we actually had one stakeholder meeting that uh, we tried to do just making sure we're being inclusive, people of different um, physical abilities, different ages, and then from um, uh, you know, just different demographics. And there are small things that we can do, like sometimes we have a great range of food trucks, but you aren't catering to meatless options. So, you know, that's just one example. And you pay attention to the community and folks who are making it to our events and just make sure we're being a little more sensitive to their needs.
Great. Um, I I think, you know, when when Steve was walking us through the survey, I really liked the the slice that you guys took and saw just like the difference between who the respondents were. Um, and maybe this is a note to our city manager and um, that we probably take that feedback and use it for other surveys as well. I think that was an interesting um, observation, you know, between who was responding to the male surveys versus the online surveys. So I hope we can use that that data for our other surveys as well. Um, the the restroom, no, you know, i- is that just that we don't have restrooms or did people just want more restrooms in the parks? I was very puzzled because I think every park that I've been to at least has one restroom.
Right. So I I do think that permanent restrooms are what we don't have at all our parks.
Right.
Like some of our parks have the portable restrooms. And it seems to be something that are, you know, the the ones that have the restrooms, the community really prefer. And it's odd because it's made it pretty high on the priority list, both in the two thousand eighteen plan as well as in this one.
Great. And I'm going to ask the my last question, but I think it's very, very important. How can we get the trolls into our park? The big sculptures, yes.
You 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 know, I I do have to look into this. I I when we opened up Big Rock North, I thought we did do something and I don't know if it wasn't anything at the scale of what uh, we have at Issaquah. But yeah, we can, we can definitely look into it.
I'm sure you could whip one up, Anjali.
Yeah.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. My question is around durability and furnishings in specific. I understand the standardization part as far as making things cheaper and easier to uh, repair and maintain. However, that also sounds very homogeneous. So I was trying to understand, what do you mean by furnishings? Because I I also take it to heart that sense of place. So having something unique could be a benefit too, but I don't know what you mean by furnishings. So that would be helpful.
Furnishings is just a term for site furnishings is like your park benches, your tables, if we have lights at any of our parks. And uh, so for some of those, it's just uh, operationally easier if you have, you know, spare parts or repairs to be made that you are, you have a consistent language throughout your parks. And um, it's the same thing with play equipment. Actually, it's a bigger deal with play equipment.
That's actually where I was kind of headed was it the homogeneity of the uh, play equipment? Because I could see that being problematic and potentially boring. If you're seeing the same things park to park to park.
Manufacturers do have quite a range
Okay.
of uh, play equipment and so you would still end up with variety. So and, you know, uh, we don't end up replacing all the play equipment at the same time.
Okay.
So, uh, but at the same time, it, you you know, right now, we just, we have some of our play equipment that's gotten old enough where it's really hard to find spare parts and uh, be able to repair them. So for the long term, we do need to think about uh, being a little more consistent with what we have. And the same like irrigation is another great example. You know, you can't have different spray heads in different parks and then it's really hard to go in and repair them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Anjali. I just had one question and I think it came from goal six. When we talk about uh, connectedness of our trails and our parks and we talked about, I think was mentioned easements. Um, do we have like an internal system where parks talk to community development? When new development may be going in and there's an opportunity before homes are built or what have you go in, hardscape goes in, where we can develop that easement before um, you know, that window closes? Is that is that a process that we have in place?
We do, and that is a great question. So thank you for asking that. And it's actually the reverse because parks will not hear about those new developments until community development tells us about them. So what they do is uh, when the plan is adopted, they actually refer to the trails map. And every time that development comes in, they compare it with the trail map. And if the trail map shows that that is a desired connection, then they flag it and they bring the parks team in. And we work with them. One recent example is Big Rock Vista. It's going in off of Lancaster Way and there is a public easement that will bring residents from that neighborhood directly into Big Rock Park.
Sounds like David Pyle needs to keep you more phone calls.
Yes.
Just kidding. All right. Anyone else? Deputy Mary Lamb?
I just have a few comments, actually. Um, I have seen the pros plan show up at a couple, a bunch of city events. And so I really appreciate um, the time that staff has spent like at the farmer's market with the booths and engaging with the residents. Um, I'm also pleased to see that um, two of the top um, goals here, two of the goals, uh, climate resiliency and DEIB, which are council goals and that they mirror up. So I really like that. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that um, I ran into Shelby at the Open House when she was doing the pros plan and she was giving me an update on the nature path at Beaton Hill. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that um, parks took to heart. Um, that um, to to put in a path that really increased the safety for the residents on that road. And um, especially that it was um, a transportation project and that we were able to find um, a happy medium, so to speak, to put in something that the residents could use that didn't cost a lot of money. We don't know exactly the outcome because it hasn't been, you know, completed yet. We don't know exactly the outcome because it hasn't been, you know, completed yet. I hear from Shelby that they'll be, they'll start mowing for the path shortly. But if there are other opportunities similar to that, that we haven't identified, it would be fantastic, especially knowing that this nature path won't be a huge expense, but it will like add such a great benefit to the people in the surrounding community. Like, if there are other areas in the city that we could do that similar idea with, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for that, yes. Kevin has worked closely with Mike Keller, Park Superintendent, Maintenance Superintendent. And yeah, we do hope to open that fairly quickly. Another project that I'll mention that we are beginning to do that on is Big Rock South. We are trying to get the trails in the northern half, just to a point where we can actually open up the north half of the park to the public as soon as we can complete it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. And I know Councilmember Trean said in questions that you all were able to answer as well.
Yes, thank you for those.
And so obviously, next steps are you're coming back after you go visit some other commissions, yeah?
That's right. We'll see you in a couple of months.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you so much. Great. Well, next up is our Beaver Lake Management District Work Plan and Budget. Genevieve and Toby. They're both online, maybe?
Hey, good evening, council. My name is Genevieve Rubenelli. I'm the Management Analyst in Public Works, and I'm joined today by Toby Kanan, our Senior Stormwater Engineer. And we are here today to present the Beaver Lake Management District, and I will share my screen. Toby, we can't hear you.
Hey, Jen, this is Scott. Maybe stop sharing your screen for just a moment. Let's make sure Toby can, we can hear him. Not yet. Yeah, he might have to jump out and jump back in, Toby. So bear with us, those online and council, while we, the magic of technology, it works 97% of the time rather well.
If I may, while we're waiting for Toby, I know that this was briefly introduced, but for the record, Audrey Stercy, the Public Works Director. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. And we're very excited to present Beaver Lake Management District's work plan and budget as well this evening. So hopefully Toby can rejoin quickly and we'll have sound.
So in the interest of time, Audrey, I don't know if you and Jen are prepared to maybe kick it off and Toby can join when he's available.
I think that's a great idea. So I will go ahead, Jen, whenever you're ready, if you're able to share your screen in.
And just for the record, Toby is upstairs. He's heading down. He'll be here momentarily. So why don't we go ahead and get started, and Toby can jump in when he gets here.
Wonderful. Looks like my screen is sharing. I will go ahead and get started. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Wonderful. So we are here this evening to discuss the Beaver Lake Management District and give everyone sort of an overview of what the Lake Management District is, how it started, what they currently do, and what we are planning for the future. And then, so just to start off, what is a Lake Management District? So Washington state law authorizes communities to create local improvement districts for lake improvements and beach management. And then, you know, Lake Management Districts, they are public entities created through a vote of property owners and then ratified by a city or county council. So the start of a Lake Management District really is within the community. These districts are funded by property assessments within the district boundary, and they are limited terms up to 10 years. So, and the Lake Management Districts, they provide a government structure for property owners to fund and then participate in a program of lake improvement and maintenance. And so, so as for the Beaver Lake Management District, in 1995, there was community interest. And so King County established the Beaver Lake Management District. And then in 1999, when the city was incorporated, the city inherited the Lake Management District. And then, once that 10-year limited term was up in 2006, with community interest and support, the city renewed the BLMD. And then this happened again in 2016. And so our current term expires in 2026. And then as part of a Lake Management District, there is an advisory board, whoops, that is composed of five members, and all of the members of the advisory board must own property within the watershed. They attend quarterly meetings. Okay. And then Toby is here. And then, so the advisory board represents community priorities and needs. And so Toby and myself are the staff support for the advisory board. And then we also have a contract with the King County Water-Land Resource Division staff for technical support for items such as water quality monitoring and testing. Okay, and then Toby, you want to take it away?
I would be happy to. And it's nice to see everybody in person. And Jen, thank you for rolling with the punches. Now, I'm not sure where we left off, but we're obviously here to share just the general overview of what the Beaver Lake Management District does. And we're kind of partitioning that off with, you know, what we've done to this point, what we're planning to do, and, you know, a little ask at the end. So kind of jumping into the current activities, the district was continued in 2016 with an eye toward monitoring water quality, you know, doing sampling, just conducting general overview of the lake, and also primarily treating the invasive water lilies, which became a real problem. That program was initiated by the Beaver Lake Community Club. Unfortunately, they only had control and access over small portions of the waterfront, so they really weren't successful in doing that. But after the city took this over, you know, we had huge pieces of property and also had the overview of the overall community to tackle that. And we've eradicated, we think about 90% of those water lilies at this point. Another program that we've tried to maintain is just general community outreach, advising the public of what the Beaver Lake Management District does and providing periodic updates. Right now, our primary vehicle for that is a website with the link that's identified that takes viewers out to also some of the King County monitoring work, which is reported on the county's website. Next slide, Jen? The segue to that is kind of what are we planning on doing for the remaining three years of the district's term? The community priorities, we sat down with the advisory board a couple of months ago and did some fact finding about what the priorities are and where the interests lie. And one thing they really want to do is continue to push to eradicate the invasive weeds that are, you know, kind of taken root within the lake. Obviously, the success they've had with the fragment water lily, there's a handful of, you know, holdout homeowners that we intend to try to convert and encourage to participate in this, you know, but kind of get rid of the water lily once and for all. Yellow flag iris, which while attractive, is also an invasive weed. The sessile fruited arrowhead is something that's apparently only shown up in three or four lakes within the state. This is a particular concern with ecology. King County's discovered this, and, you know, word is that we should be aggressive in trying to pursue eradication of this as well. And then finally, there's cattails in a lot of the shallower areas of the lake. Some of these are native and some of them are invasive. And through some lab testing, we hope to differentiate between the two and then formulate a treatment plan for all these. Additional work that the community intends to pursue is upgrading some monitoring equipment for water quality sampling and automating this. Currently, that equipment's been broken and it's compelled the county just to go through manual sampling. We do want to improve our outreach and education. Like I said, we do have, you know, a website, but we do want to make that a little more proactive and robust communication. The assessments go out as a separate billing, and we intend to include, you know, just an overall mailing, kind of articulating what the district's goals are and what the priorities are. And kind of a corollary to that is installation of some signs in Beaver Lake Park, on the Beaver Lake Management, or rather, the Beaver Lake Preserve. And then also, there's a boat launch across the lake, and that's owned and operated by the state. So those are three avenues where we feel we can reach a lot of the public. Another, kind of toward the tail end that we hope to pursue is an updated watershed management plan. And this would, instead of just focusing explicitly on the lake itself, you know, expand the reach to the watershed and cover those areas out, you know, on the land, if you will, that do have a significant impact on water quality within the lake. And then finally, we mentioned the website. We've got a link, as I noted, to the county's website, and buried within there is a whole bunch of really good data. But unfortunately, it's not very accessible. The county's noted that they have the resources to make that a lot more presentable and accessible. We feel that that would be a good investment, just to, you know, help community understand what the district does. And there's some thoughts on staff Jen wanted to share as well, so I'll turn it back over to her.
Yep. So historically, Beaver Lake Management District and Advisory Board have been supported by a single staff member. And so with the addition of Toby, so now we are at two staff members, we do have more, much more capacity to begin tackling some of these work items that there is strong community interest for, that we just did not have the capacity to before. So that is part of the work plan. And, you know, how are we going to pay for the expanded work plan and all those added work items? You know, the Beaver Lake Management District is funded through an annual special assessment. And King County sends out these bills every year. And so in the map, or on the map on the screen, lakefront parcels are indicated in red. That is considered Zone 1. They are charged $306 a year. And then non-lakefront parcels are in blue, and they are charged $31 a year. And if there is a property owner who owns multiple parcels, they are only charged once and for the higher fee.
Yeah, what, one thing I would, I think I'm still here. One thing we'd add to that is that there is no inflation. This is, you know, fixed assessment over the 10-year period. The other thing is established by state regulations is that this money goes into its own bucket, it's earmarked just for the management district. And while it gets deposited into the stormwater fund and into the general fund, that money is not to be used for anything other than Beaver Lake Management District programs. As part of establishing that assessment, a budget was obviously developed. The 10-year revenue projections, a estimated roughly $64,000 a year for a total of $643,000 over that 10-year capture. So with that, we wanted to jump into, you know, the next slide, which talks a little bit about, you know, how we're budgeting some of these work program items that we discussed. The gray bars there, just, you know, that shows that kind of steady annual $64,000 contribution, totaling out at $643,000. The blue represents the budgeted expenses, and as quite obvious, those end exactly at $643,000 as well, as all budgets always do. But that is by design, obviously. There is a, you know, beginning and a sunset within these districts. So the expectation is that it does get spent. The orange, actually, the next line here shows the actual expenses as well as the projections for the years that haven't occurred yet. And those are based on, you know, current levels of spending. There's a couple, you know, you start to see a divergence in around 2021. You know, that's a reflection, I think, first of COVID. There was a real downturn in any activity within the city. And secondly, a decision was made after observing some of the improvements in water quality that the water quality assessment report that was expected to be done on a five-year basis, it was concluded that that wasn't necessary. And then with some of the staff turnovers, that gap between projected budgeted expenses and actual expenses continues to grow. And what's happened through that period is some of the programs have, you know, kind of fallen by the wayside. So we're making a push to try to reinvigorate some of those efforts. And the way that impacts budget, you know, one, the first thing is in the mid-biennium budget adjustment, the 2024 budget for the district was $50,000, and we've included an ask to increase that to $75,000. And then with the coming 2025, 26 biennium, we'll have, you know, budget numbers reflecting there. And I think the key takeaway is that while we're increasing budget numbers, that money exists. You know, that's effectively in the bank. And the revenue projections have been, you know, very, very accurate. You know, it's, there's always a little bit of guesswork in terms of how much money actually gets collected. You know, some people subdivide their property, you get increased number of lots, there's a number of variables that can contribute to that. But we're within $10,000 of revenue at this point. So that kind of illustrates the expectation on how we're going to, you know, spend the money, if you will, based on these programs that we want to pursue. And with that, we'll kind of wrap things up by noting that, as we said, there will be mid-biennium budget adjustment. We've got that, you know, included in there. And then the second thing, there will be a formal work plan that we'll ask council to adopt, and that'll, you know, timing-wise, should be somewhat concurrent with the budget, which I know kind of runs on its own time zone. But with that, we'll turn it over to questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. I have a quick question, just sort of about the Sisal adit, what is it? The, thank you. The, like this most recent invasive species. And I understand you have to use your budget specifically for projects just for this air, for this benefit. for this benefic district, basically. So to prevent invasive species from coming in, do residents have to do something to treat their boards, their canoes, before they go in the water? I'm wondering, as you, as you looking at sunsetting, and, you know, we may renew or we may sunset, I guess it depends, but to keep invasive species from promulgating, is there a path using that money that's a bit of overage right now towards mitigating, getting invasive species in there to begin with?
There is not, and the speculation is that these came, you know, the nearest weeds, if you will, that Cecil fruited weed is in a couple of small lakes in Snohomish County, just, you know, just across county line. And what's most likely is that those arrived, you know, perhaps by bird.
Oh.
You know, there's, you know,
Okay.
Putting it on a board and rolling it up and chucking it in your trunk is, you know, pretty tough for things to survive. The thinking is that, you know, this is natural, but they're invasive, and they invade.
Just an ongoing battle. And I'm also curious, do you guys have any partnership with the King Conservation District?
The King County Water and Land Resources Division partners with them on some programs. But this is, within that, there's a Small Lakes Program, which is pretty much an autonomous unit. And they, you know, the resources they have, you know, are separate, you know, budget-wise and everything else. They're an independent district. KCD is funded and financed through, you know, kind of a separate revenue source, right?
Right, but there, there's alignment.
Yeah.
And they also work with homeowners to help educate. So I just wondered if, you know, if there was, what the relationship was, if it was treated very separately. It sounds like it's separate.
Yeah, and the lake manager, or the lake group, the Small Lakes Group within King County does do some education. They do have stewards that they, you know, volunteers that they coordinate. And there, there's stewards within both Beaver Lake and Pine Lake, actually. There's really three monitoring programs within the city that occur on the two lakes. There, you know, there's the standalone one that occurs on Beaver Lake. And then through the Small Lakes Program, there's separate monitoring, which is more general in nature. And then there's also, King County conducts beach monitoring of, you know, bacteria and temperature. But the Lakes Program itself, there is some overlap between personnel and efforts. You know, they'll conduct, they'll make one trip and do essentially two monitoring activities within Beaver Lake, and then go down to one monitoring activity for Pine Lake. But yeah, that overlap there does include, you know, the staffing that supports the volunteers.
Okay, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Nupuray?
Thank you. Quick question, you know, I know you have a lot of plans for what to do with these funds. I think one thing that I was hoping would be there is also around the topic of climate change and resiliency. Is that something that's already incorporated in this? You know, the, what the advisory committee does? Or do you have partnerships with the Parks Department? I mean, we just looked at their goals and the pros planned. You know, they have climate resiliency as one of their goals. Could you sort of piggyback on that?
Kind of thinking off the cuff on this, I think there's certainly some synergy there that could occur. The nature, if you will, of, you know, these Lake Management Districts, they're, you know, that 10-year window. So they typically tackle somewhat discreet problems. And this one was kind of geared toward, you know, what, the water quality doesn't seem right. So they instituted this kind of vigorous monitoring program. And secondly, it was the obvious issue of the weeds. So there's kind of a, you know, they had blinders on for some of these larger issues like climate change, but to your point, I think that's certainly, you know, a potential overlap that we could introduce to the advisory board.
And they still have the program where they bring in trout for fishing in the lake?
Yeah, and that's a state program.
That's a state program, okay, cool, thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Toby, is this the only, is Beaver Lake the only lake that we have a Lake Management District? That we have it within our city limits? We don't have anything like this on Pine Lake?
No.
And certainly not on Lakes of Mamish?
No, we, yeah, Beaver Lake, this was something, it is kind of an organic, you know, creation, if you will, that originates with the homeowners. Pine Lake, you know, the other thing I'd point to too is Beaver Lake has a real robust community club. It's kind of characterized by the advisors, advisory board members as a somewhat social club, if you will, in that it's, you know, just a good way to meet neighbors and share interests. Whereas Pine Lake has never developed that synergy. They had at one point a lake association, which is kind of a lake district light. They don't have the ability to tax or, you know, float bonds or generate revenue in that way. It's purely people throwing money in a hat, more like a homeowners association. But I think that dissolved more than 15 years ago.
Okay.
And there hasn't been any effort since.
Okay, all right, thanks, Toby.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just had a quick question. Would you guys consider lowering the assessment? Or is the plan just to be more, monitor the budget a little bit better?
The, we did look at that. You know, we wanted to get, kind of cast a wide net on, you know, what all the options were as we looked at, you know, just budget planning and work planning, just trying to get our head around, you know, what the opportunities were. And the reality of reducing the assessment, we have to go through essentially the same exact level of effort that was necessary to create the district. We have to go through the voting process, you know, getting ballots and, you know, seeing if that's acceptable. And then we have to circulate, you know, information to all the residents, and it's a pretty onerous process. We did sit down with Carrie just to explore whether that was, first of all, legal, secondly viable. And her advice at that time was that that wasn't desirable. So, and it, there is work to do. I think that's the other takeaway is that, you know, we're not looking for things to spend money on. We're, you know, we have the money, and these are the things that, you know, need to be, need to be used.
Great, thank you.
I guess I just had a question. If this is something that we would do again, how soon, so this ends in, like, what is it? End of calendar year 2026?
Right.
Like, how would that come back up? Or what does this look like for the future?
The advisory board would, you know, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of people in this room that weren't around, you know, eight years ago or whatever, when the last goal with the board came. But usually that's, you know, initiated, the advisory board says, there's enough here that we want to continue. The resolution is the mechanism that kind of solicits neighborhood feedback. So that would be floated during the course of our final year, 2026. You know, that, we collect that information, you know, there's votes, if you will. Once that support is shown, the ordinance is written in such a way to indicate we have the community's support. You know, here's a budget, here's, you know, all the kind of working guidelines, if you will, for that next 10-year period, and that gets adopted. So it's a, you know, we've got some, the MRSC, for example, has picked the city's ordinance and resolution as guidance for how cities or counties may be able to, you know, form a lake district. So it's, it's been vetted by them, you know. We've got a good track record there.
No, that makes sense, yeah. I was just kind of curious, like, when this will come back again? You know, like, can't predict the future, but, no, that's great. Yeah, thank you all. Does anyone else, Council, have any of the questions or comments? Awesome, yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming downstairs.
Sure.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Again, good to see you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, have a good night.
Take care.
I know, he sleeps here, yeah. All right, all, City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Just a quick plug. Council will recall that this is welcoming week. And tomorrow, at the farmer's market, is our welcoming week event in partnership with the Chamber in the farmer's market. So I'd like to invite our community to come out and join us tomorrow evening. Fingers crossed that it doesn't look like this evening, and it's a little drier. And we really are hoping to see everyone come out and join us for our welcoming week events.
Great, thank you. Council, do we have any verbal reports? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm on the Public Issues Committee,